Now, if we want our copy, we have to go online and print it.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting, annual town warrant discussion meeting with Jack Hathaway, Jim Leahan, Fire Instructor Todd Lindmark. We've got a big crowd tonight, so we're going to be taking questions, answering hopefully anything you -- people have questions about the warrant. I'm sure people will trickle in as time goes on, too.
So Anne Marie did have a question before, just before we went on camera and asked if -- so we have printed out copies here of the warrant and the advisory board recommendations, but those are going to the printer tomorrow morning, and they will be mailed out. You should receive them either Thursday or Friday at home.
They'll be mailed at home again?
Yep.
Oh.
And there'll be copies that will be available at town meetings as well.
The budget will not be included in the whole mailing, but we have a sum -- we have the advisory board's write-up of the budget, and then the budget is obviously available online, and we will have copies at town meeting. But it's about -- that's about 20 pages all by itself, so. So, you know, we've done this -- this is the second time we've done it. We actually did it years ago a few times for different -- when there was a particular project. But this is through Mr. Rosenberg and a few others have encouraged us to open these up a little bit more, and it worked out really well last time we did it. Just kind of a free-for-all question-and-answer period. I, you know, maybe if we start off, if people have questions, and then if we get off to a slow start, we can just go through the warrant and kind of talk about each one quickly. But I think for interest of time, we'd rather have people just get right to their questions if you have questions. We do have the Bruins game. I'm going to tell the audience at home, just in case you see it, we do have the Bruins game on muted because we have a lot of Bruins fans at this table and maybe in the audience as well. But so, if anybody has any questions, I know Walter has a -- Walter and David have a microphone there. We need you to have the microphone. Oh, there's a microphone over by Anne Marie as well, if anybody wants to ask a question, just so people at home can hear you.
Now, what's this?
It should be right on. I think she leaves it on.
So, I don't know what a town charter is. So, before I could decide about a study committee, I don't know what a town charter is.
That was a question on Facebook, too, Jack.
Article 19. So, the article says to see if the town will vote to create a town government study committee as appointed by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of creating a town charter or taking any other action relative thereto. And this wasn't -- this isn't -- in having some more discussions with our attorney and with Jay Talaman, who's our moderator, kind of came to the conclusion that this wasn't really something that was necessary to have at a town meeting, but because the selectmen can make a -- they can form a committee at any time. But I think just for the interest of having a town meeting discussion about this process, it was good to keep it on. But a charter is a set of bylaws. It's like a constitution for a town. So, if we want to create -- right now, the town operates, and a lot of towns, as they got originally started, they just operate under state law. There's enabling legislation at the state level that allows you to hire a manager, that allow you to create a planning board, that allow you to create a zoning board, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. What a lot of towns have done, probably 200 or so towns now, have created their own charter, so that if they want to do something -- they want to set their own rules. They want to define how they want to process. And so, that's what a town charter is, is your own local constitution that says, "This is how we will run our government. This is how we will process our bills. This is how we will elect this committee. This is how we'll elect this committee. This is how we will appoint this committee." So, it gives us the -- the town study committee gives us the opportunity to look at everything we do, how we do it, and decide if we want to make changes to that. And we don't have to -- we're not limited to just following state law. We can set it up the way we want to do it.
Does that require the legislature to bless what we propose?
It does. So, the study committee would go through that process, and it's at least a year, probably realistically. It's a two-year process. And then they would come back to -- through the selectmen, and then eventually to town meeting with home rule legislation that would go to the legislature to -- they would bless our charter.
What would be the relation of the charter to the town bylaws? Does the charter replace the bylaws or supplement them, or what?
Yeah, I think we would probably clean up the bylaws. Remove -- so, like, the finance committee is defined in our bylaws. We would -- be my recommendation anyway, to wipe all that out and put everything into the charter. The charter would also include a provision that would allow you to modify the charter in the future, whether or not that's allowed to be changed at the town meeting level, or you want to have the charter go back to the legislature, the state legislature in the future. Again, that's something we would get to define. Obviously, we still got to go through the state legislature to approve our charter, but.
No, that's okay.
I know Rantham just spoke all that seriously.
I know that at the moderator's organizing committee, not organizing, organizing meeting, I raised the issue of whether the article should state how many members this study group had, and I was told it wasn't necessary in the article. I'm curious as to what the selectmen are thinking about with respect to the size of the study committee.
That's a great question. I'd have to look at, like, I don't remember how many folks Rantham had on it, but I know people have raised questions about who would be on it, who's eligible. I mean, broad participation is our goal, and, you know, getting all the stakeholders involved, whether it's seniors, whether it's young families. But obviously, you can't, you know, it has to be unwieldy. It has to be manageable, too, David. So, I haven't, myself personally, I haven't given it, you know, I haven't thought about it enough to how many members we would want to have. Obviously, you know, I don't even know if we want to -- need a minute, you know, I don't even know what the minimum would be. I'd have to look at what Rantham's doing, what a lot of towns have done.
Yeah, I think -- obviously, you want to have an odd number. And then, because when you get to the time to vote, it makes it easy, and something that's, as you said, not -- something that's manageable. I think you'd probably end up having a lot of subcommittees and breakout, too. You know, you're going to have a group of people focused on financial processing. You're going to have a group of people focused on land use, land use boards. So, there's going to be a lot of different little subcommittees that'll focus on specifics and then bring that all back together. And it doesn't have to end up in a charter. You know, you may just...
Yeah, I was going to say, the recommendation, Anne, could be to stick with what we have.
I think the key is to get representation from differing views. I mean, you need folks that are deeply involved in the schools. You need folks that have concerns over development. You need folks that have concerns over a number of different broad issues that the town faces. So, getting representation from those respective views is important. We've done this before, and actually, Mr. Hathaway is the benefactor of the last time he reviewed our organizational structure, when the finance director used to be in an elected position in town. And the charter committee recommended a number of changes, some of which the town adopted, some of which the town did not. And -- but one of the changes was that the finance director would become a appointed position as opposed to an elected position for some very obvious reasons. But that's one of the changes that was made last time we did this. I think it was in the '90s.
Would you envision that after the committee makes its recommendation, it's sort of an all-or-nothing vote, that is, the town either accepts it?
Oh, no, not at all. In fact, that's not what happened last time.
You can take good pieces.
Yeah. I mean, it's basically a pick-and-choose. You know, one of the recommendations that I remember back in the '90s was that we go to a five-member Board of Selectmen. That was never brought forward and never considered. So, it's a menu of considerations that people can take a look at, and then the town decides. It's a town vote.
A town vote at an election or at a town meeting?
Town meeting.
Town meeting vote.
Yeah, and then approved by the legislature. So, it's just, it's -- in the corporate world, you'd call it reviewing your organizational structure and just, you know, are we doing things the way, the most efficient way we can? You know, it may come back that we don't make any changes. It's not -- there's no predetermination that it comes to a, you know, a defined conclusion. That's not the intent of it. And it wasn't the intent of it back in the '90s. It's just, let's take a look at how we do things, and if there's a better way to do it, let's consider it.
Thank you.
Other questions on -- Walter?
How about this one?
Okay.
Article 20. The way it's printed on page 15, it struck me that it was just a typo, but either that or some explanation. The little table there where it says zoning board, planning board, and then planning board, zoning board, that seems confusing to me. Seems it should be planning board, planning board, and zoning board, zoning board, but...
Which article?
Article 20.
I think you're right, Walter.
I think you're right.
So, we're in the final stages of proofreading this before it goes to the printer tomorrow, so that's a great catch.
Gold star for you, Walter.
There we go. Stick it right in there for me.
So, you get to sit in the front row at town meeting now.
Actually, we appreciate the fact that you read it. Thank you. Others? Questions? Any comment? Anyone?
No, you can -- right now, just draw our questions that you have.
Feel free. Just jump in.
Any article, any question you have.
It's an open forum. Just need a mic for the folks at home, that's all.
Let's don't press the button like that.
It's only for the cable. It doesn't amplify it in here.
Turn the lights on. Here, the president.
It's for people at home.
Oh, it's being taped. Fabulous. Okay, I have a question about Article 19. I was just curious. I understand what a charter is. I did a little research on that. But I was curious as to Article 19, okay, whether or not the committee would be paid and how many people, and whether you would have represent -- who would be -- who would the committee be made up of? Would you have a representation from various businesses, whatnot?
Jim had addressed that earlier, Jack.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. It's okay.
Sadly, not paid is a real...
The good news and bad news, depending on how you look at it, is no, nobody's paid.
Okay.
And he had mentioned earlier, we're looking for cross-section, you know, people that are engaged in the schools, people, seniors, you know, as many stakeholders across the broad, what Norfolk represents today.
And volunteers.
And they will volunteer the time. And it's a lot of time, because, as Jack had said earlier, I mean, the process is a year to two years alone with various subcommittees and stuff like that. So, we'll need a lot of help.
Right. I was just curious.
Yeah, and as I mentioned earlier, we've done this before, and Rantham has done it as well, and a lot of towns, and Jack said about 200 towns have done this. It's a review of how we organizationally are structured, and nothing may change. You know, you folks decide whether you like any of the changes. Last time we did it, one of the major changes was the finance director. The finance director used to be an elected position here in town, and we made it an appointed position, and for very obvious reasons. You know, you've got to have certain credentials in order to do that job, and those credentials aren't always reflected in an elected position. So, that change was made. Another change was recommended was go to five selectmen, and we chose not to do that. We stayed at three. So, it's just taking a look at how we do business and if there's a better way to do it, and then you guys decide whether you like it or you don't.
No, that absolutely makes sense. I was just curious whether or not it was paid. I mean, not that I'm looking to get more work.
Yeah, they say you're looking to get paid.
I swear. I was like, it's just budgetary. Budgetary. That's what I was looking at.
The paycheck is the same as ours.
Out of the budget, that's all. Thank you.
We used to have a pretty good number of paid positions, paid, voted, paid, elected positions in town. The selectmen, planning board members, school committee members, all got anywhere between $500 to $1,500.
Well, even more than that, way back. It was like $7,500 way back in the years, yeah. But now, all the positions are volunteered. There are no stipends.
So, again, you know, we will answer any questions you have. If we go quiet here, we can just, you know, we'd be happy to just walk through, going from one to the end. But if people want to go directly to any particular questions, we'd certainly be more than willing to do that as well.
Go.
I think Donna has a question.
Budget, page nine. At the bottom, it says informational.
Oh, on the budget, sorry. Yep.
I wondered why those figures are off separate.
So, they subtotal up to the facilities management budget above it, if you look at that. So, that's just a breakout of the expense line. And we did that, we've done that for five or six years now, and it's really just so that people can look at where we're spending, which buildings we're spending the money on. But we want to, we need the flexibility to have the budget as one line item, because when the town meeting votes, so for example there, it says salaries and expenses. When they, when you folks vote that line, salaries, that's all we can spend on salaries. If you vote expenses, that's all we can spend on expenses. If we voted that whole new, that section below it, like the old town hall, we would only be able to spend $2,000 on the old town hall. If we vote just the number of the $621,000 number, it does give us the flexibility to make adjustments in the middle of the year. So, if we end up paying $2,500 for old town hall, we can move $500 from one of the other buildings. But this is to give you an idea where we project the money to be going, but it doesn't tie us in, it doesn't tie us in anymore to the fact that we're at an overall budget of $621,000.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Point of clarification, Article four, please. Is the compensation schedule, is this compensation for the non-union members?
It is. Non-union, non-contractual.
Non-contractual, non-union.
So, it's really department head, there's department heads, there's four of us that are under contract, and then the rest of the department heads, there's another six or seven that are on the personnel bylaw. So, they don't have a contract, and they're not in any union. So, that is the COLA that would apply to them. There are also some part-time employees that don't fit into any of the unions. So, that would be their COLA as well.
And that's a straight one and a half percent increase. It's not a merit-based or review-based increase. It's just a straight increase annual.
It's a straight increase unless they're not, they're not meeting standards. If they're not meeting standards, then they don't get the COLA.
Okay, so there is a review?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Can I keep going?
Sure.
And I apologize. I don't have the new version. I printed this several days ago.
We have some.
There are some copies here.
Well, my notes are on the...
Oh, okay.
Go for it.
So, I don't have any of the -- you're lucky. You don't, I don't have any of the budget numbers. I didn't get to any of that. So, I guess the next one is the housing. Thank you so much.
So, are you talking about the budget or the warrant?
No, on the warrant, page six, or five to six, mandatory provision of affordable units.
Okay. So, which article number? Just saw.
Page 15, I'm sorry. So, it's page six.
Page nine for what we have, I think.
Page nine for us, I think.
So, this is quite a change, I see, that you're making here in this particular bylaw here. And so, as a condition of granting the special permit, the affordable housing unit shall be subject to affordable housing restrictions and a regulatory agreement in a form acceptable to the planning board. Is that a deed restriction in perpetuity, or is it's in perpetuity?
It's in perpetuity.
Okay.
Under affordable housing, yes.
Okay. Okay. That answers that. Thank you.
So, that, so that, just while we have a dull moment here. So, that article is obviously one of the planning board zoning articles, and will require two-thirds vote. That one, kind of the meat of what that is doing is adding some clarity as to when they would have to file for the permit. And it sounds like you understand this probably even better than I do. But for everybody else, it would also define when the developer would have to deliver the affordable housing unit to the town. There's some gray area in our current bylaw, so this would, this would improve on that language. And that also gives the developer the option, but only if the planning board agrees, to have a cash option. So, they can, so, right now, if you build a 10-house subdivision, you'd have to have one house in that unit, in that, either one house within the subdivision be an affordable unit, or deliver a house outside of the subdivision as an affordable unit. The third choice now will be to deliver, have a cash option that would go to the municipal housing trust. But that's only if the housing, if the planning board and the housing trust agree to that, which, you know, in all the discussions we've had, they, the developer would really have to come up with a sweetheart deal to make that, you know, we'd have to have land available. The housing trust would have to have the capacity to be able to do it. And Jim is the chairman of the housing trust, too, so I don't want to put words in his mouth, but...
But just for a point of reference, please, what would be the cash amount right now based on the calculation that's in this particular article? If a developer were to choose the payment in lieu of the housing, what would that, approximately, what would the payment be?
Well, let me give you an example. I'm going to say, I think it's five or six years ago, when we purchased the Gumps Farm, what we call the Gumps Farm, which is where the playground is now. There was a development going on between Rantham and Norfolk, Fox Run, or Fox Hill, or whatever it's called, Fox Run, I guess it's called. The developer did not want to build affordable homes in that development. So, we basically cut a deal. When we purchased the land, we developed, we identified four or five lots that would be for affordable housing. And what we managed to work out was the developer built those homes at no cost to the town, and we sold the homes as affordable units and received the proceeds of that. It was, I wish we could do that every time. I mean, that was a very, very good deal for the town. And we managed to get five homes out of that into our affordable inventory at no cost to the town. So, we're, this article, we're looking for flexibility. You know, Norfolk is not an inexpensive home, inexpensive place to buy a home. And when we purchase a home in the affordable housing trust, we have to bring it up to a certain standard under state guidelines. So, it's hard to find them. So, having the option of a developer being able to give us a cash equivalent to allow us to buy a home that we could rehabilitate, to bring into standards, to be able to be an affordable home, is a good option.
Correct.
But it would be substantial. You know, it would be whatever the market value is at that particular point in time.
Yeah, and it is defined in the bylaw.
Yeah, there is a calculation. I'm just wondering what the number is currently, like a general number currently, if you knew that off the top of your head.
I would guess in the fours.
Okay, okay.
But that's a guess.
Yeah. Walter's here from the planning board. You guys didn't talk about that at your hearing, did you?
No, we didn't talk about this particular aspect. But I think it would also depend on the development that the man is putting up, the person's putting up. Because if they're putting up $400,000, that's one number that you would expect. Putting up $700,000, that's another number that you might expect. So, we...
Yeah, thank you.
Why did I forget that?
But it's our decision to agree to it. So, that's kind of good, that's just...
Right. No, I mean, I think it's a, it's a good change. Shall I continue?
Just let me pop one thing in on that, that also...
Sue Jacobson's our affordable housing director.
That was also something that after our HPP plan was determined, that the consultants suggested that we have that in our plan as an option. So, that was another reason why we included it.
Thanks, Sue.
Because also, too, if you notice around town, right, we have a lot of nine-home developments versus 10-home and bigger developments. So, this is, again, given another option, maybe, you know, again, I've seen, I think one reason just came up for more than 10 homes, other than 40B, right? And the reason is because they want to make as much money as they can.
Sure, absolutely. Great, thank you.
Trying to help a little bit.
So, on to Article 18, please.
18.
It's the limited-use motor vehicle sales.
Do you have the microphone for you?
Oh, sure. So, oh, that's awfully loud. So, it says here, it's limited-use motor vehicle sales. And then, as you proceed to the third line, it's at Section 59 for the sale and preparation for the sale and use of motor vehicles, but which does not, and you strike store, maintain, or, and the display vehicles for sale on the premises. I find that very confusing, because if someone is selling and preparing motor vehicles, I'm a little confused by they can't display vehicles. Can you clarify that? And then my other concern is, obviously, we don't have showrooms here. So, they're garages with cars in various states of repair and on different lots. Will this address the blight issue as well?
Could you be more, which blight issue? I mean, just, not to be funny.
Just cars parked in, on land, you know, I don't want to name anyone specifically, but...
That's fine. So, this was, this was put together because a company approached us called Carvana, who is a big company down south. And they actually have Super Bowl ads where they have the vending machines, and it's, they don't want to do that here, but they, that's who they are. So, they're looking for kind of a distribution center. So, the trend are, and I still can't buy into this, is the trend is that buying used cars is becoming more and more of an internet phenomenon, and people aren't going on to used car lots and shopping for cars. They're going on the internet. So, that's what they want to do. They don't want to, they don't want to sell cars. They don't want to have a lot to sell. And this would actually be on the lot on Route 1A where there is a used car place now. It's across from Eagle Brook.
It's pretty close to Eagle Brook.
Mitch's Auto Repair. So, they've got all those cars out front. So, they want to take that over and get rid of all those cars that are on display. They want to keep all their cars behind the fence. They want the ability to really just bring cars in, just buff them up, clean them up, detail them, and then, then deliver them out to the customers. So, this is zoning for just that, that part of town. I can't remember if, it's one of the C districts, and I don't want to say the wrong one. So, it's one of the C districts down there. But it's to replace an existing car lot. So, we think, we see it as an improvement over, that car lot is operating under a zoning board, special permit from the '90s. A car lot couldn't be there under the regular zoning. But we think this is a good, we had this limited-use motor vehicle sales in our, in our bylaws, which allowed, it's really more internet sales, but there's no cars even on the lot. So, we just, this is kind of a compromise. So, I think we're all, we're all, I think, we're all in favor of not having cars, you know, with banners and signs and all that stuff. But they're going to come in, and they're going to build a little office building and give us some commercial development growth, some tax benefit. And we think it'll provide a good service, too, that'd be a win for everybody.
Okay, thank you. Shall I continue? So, the next one, and I don't know if anyone else has the question on 20, Article 20 and 21.
20 or 21?
Well, we'll start with 20, with the revolving fund, to establish the revolving funds. So, I guess my question is, if we take the first one, column E, the limit of $5,000, is that per expense, expenditure?
Per year.
Per year.
Right.
Total amount per year.
Total amount that they can spend per year. And is the, is the revolving fund capped
at a certain amount of money?
Todd, the finance director, answer.
When you sit, so, the monies come into the account.
Correct.
Typically, what's going to happen is, it's a revolving, so monies come in, monies go out.
Right.
Typically, most revolving accounts are going to be basically a wash. But there are some accounts that might accumulate some monies. For instance, the recreation field use is a revolving account, and they do accumulate some monies. Typically, they're going to spend them back on the recreation programs. So, it can accumulate on some of the accounts. But these particular accounts are designed really to be basically a wash. So, the monies that come in are going to be used to pay for the expenses that are associated with those particular items, on these particular two accounts. The limits, you have to vote annually for budgetary purposes. It's a requirement under statute, so that's why we have to put the limits in there. And then the second article obviously lists our other revolving accounts along with their expense limitations. The way you adjust those limitations, depending on the needs of the particular revolving fund, especially if it becomes to a point where, you know, we're spending more and more monies, it just makes sense to raise them over time. So, we do look at those.
So, can we have a point of clarification on column E, that it's an annual expense?
Sure.
So, I have a question about that. I want to understand whether that means that that's the maximum that can be in it at any one time, or that's the maximum that could be collected, that could be deposited into it during the year, or it's the maximum that could be expended from it during the year.
It's your last. So, maximum expended from it, from the year.
So, the revolving fund could accumulate $100,000, and as long as they didn't expend more than $5,000, that would be okay?
That is correct.
Thank you.
If they had $100,000, I bet Jack would scoop that for other purposes.
Yeah. We'd have it in a transfer article, and we'd move it over to the budget, yes.
If I asked if there was a limit to it.
So, the only way they could be closed, seriously, is if we had a transfer, or if we closed the revolving fund, and then Todd, through his year-end processing, would close that into the general fund, and it would flow into free cash. So, we wouldn't be able to spend it without coming back to town meeting. So, we wouldn't be able to spend it without coming back to town meeting.
Are those revolving funds addressed by the Advisory Committee on an annual basis, where they review their budgets or reviews, cash in, cash out, you know, expenditures?
They are.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, I don't want to kill the momentum here, but just give anybody else a fair shot, otherwise we'll just keep going.
Okay. Can I keep going?
Yeah.
So, just a point of clarification on Article 22, the CPC. How much does the CPC have in their fund currently?
A little, I'm going to say two and a half to three million.
Yeah.
Oh, that much?
Somewhere between two and a half and $3 million.
Oh. Okay, then, we can move on.
This is just a standard article.
Fine.
When they have to do appraisals or things of that nature, they do have administrative costs, so this just appears every year.
Okay.
That's also true for Article 23. That's the law.
Yeah.
Article 23 is the law.
Article 24, just curious, the Chapter 90 funds, is there, and again, I didn't look at the new version, but is there a schedule of roads that will be paved pursuant to the Chapter 90 funds that were delivered over this year?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bob McGee was...
Tune into our last meeting.
Yeah, Bob McGee was here. He had a list of roads that he's prioritized, different sections of roads that he's prioritized. So, he comes in front of the Board of Selectmen every six or so months with that kind of schedule, and what he wants to use, what he's got remaining from other Chapter 90 monies that weren't used, and what needs to be completed, because based on seasonality and stuff like that, so...
Okay, so you can get that on YouTube?
Yep.
Okay, great, thanks.
Will that be shown at town meeting?
Well, in fairness though, he's brought us a preliminary review of what he'd like to do. He hasn't formally, I know Scott and others gave him a lot of feedback on terms of some alternative ways of looking at some things, because our roads are really bad this year. And we're trying to maximize it as best we can, so it hasn't been finalized. So, it's to be in a future meeting, in terms of exactly what roads will be done, in fairness.
This is just accepting the money, the new money anyways.
Yeah, this is just to get the money in the bank.
Right.
This allows us to take it. I can't imagine anybody turning that down.
Right, no, no, no. I totally understand. I was just curious if there was a schedule. And then, Article 25, just again, a point of curiosity, are there any grants pending? This is about the, except monies received through application of grants. Are there any grants pending that we have out there for any reason, or?
There's no grants pending, per se, but there are grants that are done throughout the year, for instance, a lot of times with the schools.
And library.
Process. The library does...
Fire Department does the safer grants.
Council on Aging.
Supply for everything we can.
Right, absolutely. I just didn't know if there was something big pending.
Walter, go back to your question though, because you asked if it was going to be discussion at town meeting. We do have a limited discussion about roads at town meeting, and I'm kind of curious what people think, because I'm hesitant to have a lengthy discussion about what roads should be paved, because, you know, because it's one thing to have it in a Selectmen's meeting and have a relatively manageable conversation, it's another thing if you're going to get, you know, 75 people up that say, because all of our roads are not great, but if you're going to literally get 75 people up to say, "Well, you need to come over on..."
Pretty street, whatever street.
Daisy Way, or whatever road you live on. Robin?
Well...
Ah, I was new as one of the birds. So, I'm a little hesitant to have our conversation about how we're going to spend Chapter 90 money.
Well, fair enough, and I understand that, because that could consume an hour's discussion alone. But if Bob had already determined, you know, these are the 10 roads we're going to do this year, that would be one thing to put out there. If that discussion already occurred here at the Selectmen's meeting, or a future Selectmen's meeting, before a town meeting, and you said, "Here's what we're going to do," I think that would be a great...
He just brought, yeah, unfortunately, well fortunately, he just brought to us last week, Walter, and like, as you said, we pushed, not pushed back, but there was a lot of, you know...
Give and take, sure.
Yeah, give and take, and so it hasn't been finalized yet.
Sure, fair enough, okay.
But at a minimum, we'd like to do an advertisement for people to come to a future Selectmen's meeting.
That's probably the right answer.
And have that discussion.
Have a discussion just tailored to that, at the Selectmen's meeting.
Yeah, that's a, roughly where I was going to go with that, that I know that roads are an issue that some people feel very strongly, passionately about, and get up and make, you know, emotional pitches for. And I think that it would really be desirable to have an opportunity for citizens of Norfolk to express their opinions. And so, I don't know exactly what venue, but I urge you to provide some venue where that could happen.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, David. I mean, we had two gentlemen that joined us at our meeting when we were talking about the roads last week.
This road was on the agenda, so we'll just continue.
Each with their own particular passion on what roads they wanted, and, I mean, it was a really good conversation. I mean, they were part of the solution, not part of the problem. And, yeah, I mean, you know, we all own the roads, so, sure.
What about the roads, I'm coming.
So, I had suggested to Jack through Facebook that he do another TV episode of Conversation Corner of Different Things. This would be one of those subjects that maybe at town meeting, you just discuss how it gets decided, you know, how much money you get, what do you do with it?
Yeah, we could do that.
Just to explain it, and then, people could review this thing, and then, later, Bob could answer the question, or, you know, monthly or something, put out, "This is what we're doing."
Good idea, Donna.
This year, this month.
Thank you.
Articles 8 and 9 refer to capital expenditures and processes to establish a method to do that. Will the expenditure of those funds be displayed at town meeting that says, you know, "Now that we've agreed, we're going to spend X dollars on a new fire truck or a new ambulance" or whatever, whatever, will that be, it will, okay?
Yeah. So, there's a typo in Article 9, so you don't get another prize. I know you're good at that. Article 8, we don't expect there to, well, we know at this point, there aren't going to be, we're just going to definitely postpone that, because we're not going to buy any capital with cash, because we don't have any cash left. Article 9, there's, that's where the, it says the Advisory Board Committee recommends indefinite postponement of this article. That's the typo. They actually recommended approval of this article. And then, we would go forward with purchasing, we're looking to buy an ambulance. For those who view, last time, we were lucky enough to work with the state, and they paid for our last ambulance. But at this time, we're going to have to go out and purchase an ambulance, and so we're going to replace ambulance two. And then, number four, we will have more detail about that one at the town meeting, but that is to borrow money using, in the Water Enterprise Fund.
Article 10.
Sorry, I meant to say Article 10.
Article 10, nothing for you.
So, we're going to ask for money to finish construction of the Holbrook Street well, to replace the SCADA system, which is the system that allows us to remotely control the wells, the tanks, close gate valves, et cetera, control the sewer system as well, and then also to upgrade the KP system, which is the billing system. So, everybody's got a little radio transponder on their house. It's not, we're not doing anything at the house level, but we're doing some stuff in the background. That system's 10 years old, we need to replace those servers, and so that we can get that billing information in.
Good, thank you.
I have a question about that. So, the replacement of servers does not affect anything on a residential property? It's only replacing things in some central office somewhere?
Correct. My understanding is the repeaters, so there's, you know, like the radio repeaters that we have for squad cars and stuff, there's repeaters that go out to the houses. So, there's the central, I believe the central station is here in the basement, but then there's repeaters that take that information, go out to the houses, obviously bring back information about how much water you've used. So, it's not only the servers here, but it's the repeaters that are out on, I think they're out on the antennas, the antenna at the station and the well.
And the repeaters are being replaced also?
Correct, yeah.
And I guess I'm a little confused about where the repeaters are. Are they like on telephone poles, or?
No, I believe on the, I believe on the water tower here on the Weber tank up at the top of the hill here. There's another one, I don't know where the other one is. I think it's down on the Spruce Road tank.
Not Goldland, I don't think, no.
So, altogether, in town, there are like three or four repeaters?
There's four.
Or some larger number?
Oh, Todd's pointing out that I, I don't know what I'm talking about.
I think there's four repeaters, no. I think there's four.
No, I'm just kidding.
That's what he said.
Thank you.
There's four. Mr. McGee, you'll be at town meeting to give us some more specifics if I...
I have a question, might be a little off-topic, but Donna's question about the CPC funds, if I remember. So, if this isn't the right time to ask, just, I know this is kind of informal. Was I correct in seeing that on tonight's agenda, 75 Cleveland would be discussed? No? Okay, then maybe I was looking at another agenda.
CPC, I think, but that's the...
That's what I mean, CPC, yeah.
I don't know what day the meeting is, because I subscribe to meetings.
CPC is meeting Wednesday night.
But 75 Cleveland...
So, that was what, okay. Okay, thank you.
Article 27 gives the Selectmen the right to sell surplus equipment and property. That's pretty much a standard article that goes in every year. Is there a list this year that would be displayed at town meeting that says, "We're going to try to sell an old truck, or a cruiser, or whatever?"
It's usually not available at town meeting, but we do have a page on our website that when we have a vehicle, we put it up there. They are far and few between. We try and trade them in. The ambulance we're going to trade in. Occasionally, we do have vehicles that go anywhere from a few hundred dollars to maybe $3,000. We beat them up pretty good before we get rid of them.
We don't sell a lot. Wish we did, but we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, or?
Sure, Josie, go ahead.
I'm kind of surprised to see Article 11 submitted by petition. I'm just curious, how many signatures did you need?
I think for this...
To get this submitted?
A 10? You need 10, I think there were...
14.
14, yeah.
Five-day work week, is, I mean, is that going to include summer months? Is it because of the new construction projects going on at town? Or?
The town hall used to be open five days a week. We changed the hours, I'm going to say, what, seven, eight years ago?
Oh, 2005.
Five years, anyway. And there were two reasons why we did it. One was economics. We save money by not having the town hall operating at full capacity on a Friday. The other reason was that people, we had a lot of people that wanted to come in between 5:00 and 6:00 o'clock, and we were always closed at 5:00. Although, I will tell you that I think all the employees would say that they are here well beyond and will accommodate. We've had employees come in on Saturday to meet with people, to accommodate whatever their needs are. So, we, these folks have bent over backwards. But we went to, they're working the same number of hours, but we spread them over a four-day week as opposed to a five-day week, and extended the hours so that we'd be able to cover more people coming back from Boston, or the trains, or things like that. That was the reason we did that. This petition, I thought it was 11 signatures, I guess it's 14, was brought forward by a citizen that, for whatever reason, you'll have to ask the citizen, wants us to go back to five hours.
Five days.
Five days, excuse me. The employees have adjusted to the four-day work week, and I can tell you that they will speak vehemently against it at town meeting.
Would a five-day work week mean that during the week, you would not be open until 6:00?
Correct.
Because 6:00 is very convenient, you know? Yeah.
I mean, unless, so the options are, either we hire more employees, obviously, to cover the hours, or we reduce hours somewhere along the week. I mean, most of our departments are staffed by one or two people, so there'd have to be some give and take. And so, my argument is that, yeah, we'd have to go back to, we actually used to be only open until 4:00. They were open 8:00 to 4:00, Monday through Friday originally. And as Jim said, you know, the employees, it is a recruiting tool for me. I've been able to hire some employees who want to work a four-day schedule, they might have a second job, or we have a bunch that take care of children or grandchildren on Fridays, so it's a, or in some cases, they take care of their parents, in this case. We are an old town hall, so...
Speak for yourself.
I don't want to...
I was going to say, that wasn't a good comment, Jack.
I will tell you that 6:00 at night will make you increasingly accessible, especially for people who work and get on and off the train. I wonder if there, you know, could be an option where somebody could be on call over the weekend in case there's an emergency or something like that, you know?
As Jim said, and, you know, we do try and bend over backwards to work with people to, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've either had Betsy from the Land Use Board, or Carol, or Sue. Sue is, has many hats, but she's the Affordable Housing Director, she's working with me in the Town Ministers' Office, and she works with the Advisory Committee. So, she comes to night meetings, she goes, she meets people for real estate to go look at property on the weekends at night. You know, Carol does it, Betsy does it, Todd does a lot of different things, he'll go to committee meetings or do things. I can't think of a time when I haven't been able to convince somebody to, you know, meet with a resident. We had somebody, one of the snow days, we closed town hall, Carol came in through the snowstorm. She only lives a few houses down, but she came right next to Donna, and she came, she came in to meet with somebody who had driven here in the middle of the snowstorm, so, because they wanted a birth certificate, so, you know.
I think what this could be coming from, because I'm on Seacom Street, is that a number of our issues where, you know, Mr. Orhart, we had to issue a cease and desist order or whatever, was that it would happen on a Friday, and then there's no one to call, you know, then he goes to town with whatever's going on. I'm just saying, that could be where it's coming from.
Could be.
Maybe a compromise would be, you know, not have, because I like 6:00 open, I'm sure a lot of people do during the week, where you don't have someone here on a Friday, but rather have someone just on call, accessible, by phone or whatever, you know. I do that in my own work, but I don't know how we would work with the town hall.
Just as an aside on that, I mean, that's a good point, but I know that where there have been issues that have happened on days when town hall's not open, people have called the fire or the police station.
Okay.
And they in turn have, I've gotten calls from the fire department or the police departments over an issue that they thought was relevant to the Board of Selectmen, and I know other departments have done the same. We all live here, you know, so we're all accessible pretty much seven days a week, whether we like it or not.
Okay.
And, you know, so I don't, I don't think, for folks at home and anyone, if there is an issue like that when we're not available, just call the police department. They know how to get in touch with all of us, and there's an effort, redundancy.
I don't, yeah, I don't...
Somebody will be there.
I never knew to get in touch with the police department.
That would be what I would, yeah.
My neighbor would say something's going on down there, then, I'm coming from Quincy, and nor would, we never call the police department unless it's for something else. If that's something new and refreshing, and that could be told to the residents, because maybe other people don't know it like I know.
No, they would welcome the call.
Okay.
Did you finish your list over in the corner?
You know what I did, because I was browsing through this and answering.
Did you find any more typos? Because you can sit in the front row after. You can get a reserved seat.
Proofreading has never been our strength, so we'll take all the help we can get on that.
I did have a question on the election recall. What does that mean? That means if you want to take someone out of office?
That is a, another petition that's brought forward by the same petitioner, I might add, that a recall provision would allow, you'd have to read it, it's a very convoluted process, but it would allow you to create a process by which you could recall an elected official. official. You have a recall provision already in place, it's called "Don't Vote Him In Again." You know, there's no, no office in town that is elected position that's held for longer than three years, so you have that process. I think a number of people speak to this at town meeting, but I have talked with a number of towns that, not many towns have this, but towns that do have it, honestly, generally it's used as a form of harassment. It's used as a way for people to harass elected officials because, one, they either don't agree or don't like them, or pick your poison, whatever it is. That is generally, and I know there are a lot of folks that have seen that. If you want to check one in particular, take a look at Stoughton, where they had a recall provision and the town went into complete chaos. They're $2 million in the hole as a result of it. You know, you get your pick, if you want to impose it, it's democracy. No one's afraid of it, that's not the point, but in general, where you have seen these recall provisions, they have been done for purposes of harassment.
Advisory Committee had a long discussion about it, and they, there was a little bit of momentum in it, behind it, if there were some changes to it, and that was if, you know, somebody had been convicted of a crime or something.
Well, that's different, yeah.
Right. If there was, that provision was put into the recall, then I think the advisory committee, or at least some of them, could get behind it. Of course, there are some state laws, you know, that if somebody is convicted while they're holding an office, you can go through with the Secretary of State and have somebody removed, you know, so I think I'd certainly support it if there was a conviction that we could recall somebody, I don't have any problem with that at all.
I don't think any of us would have a problem with that, yeah.
The last three articles are all just rescinding, we have authorized but unissued debt, so we, we got authority to borrow money for different projects. Those projects have either been completed or we decided not to go forward with them, so Todd, during his review, has said we'd like to rescind these, and it's just, it's good for our, gets those, gets those numbers off the books, and we no longer have to report on that authorized but unissued debt.
I wanted to ask something about the discussion with respect to the recall article. Did the advisory board talk to the petitioner about his willingness to make this sort of change you were discussing? Do you know if the petitioner has been involved in that discussion?
The petitioner was at the last advisory board meeting for a little bit. I don't, I don't think he, I don't believe he ended up addressing the board.
So, the way it stands now, if somebody wanted to make that change, it would be, well, if.
I believe Jay's going to let, he has offered the petitioner to make the opening motion, so.
Right.
Whether or not that will be to IP it or approve as printed in the warrant, I don't, I don't know. And then, and then the advisory board, I believe, is going to alter, offer a substitute motion to indefinitely postpone it.
So I, I guess in the principle of, you know, citizen engagement, I, I don't like it when people are surprised at what happens at town meeting. I think that it's, you know, good to have discussions in advance and have people be prepared, and so I would like there to be discussion with the petitioner about the feeling and giving him the option of perhaps moving it with the provision that it only applies in case of a conviction or whatever.
I would agree. I think that, you know, that the invitation was extended and wasn't accepted, so.
The invitation?
Invitation by the advisory board was extended to have a conversation, and then, for whatever reason, it wasn't accepted, I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming out.
That's it? Wow.
Well, we had our select meeting, this is great.
And Marie, you haven't finished that knitting yet, we can't leave.
You weren't going to go through each one just superficially, kind of where you don't?
I can, I thought we had a pretty thorough, I think we got all the interesting ones anyway off the table.
I guess I would appreciate going through the whole thing, at least.
I can go through it in like five minutes if you.
That might provoke questions, more questions as you do that, though.
Yeah, that's what we're afraid of, I think. So Article 1, the way our town meeting works, that's the election, so that'll happen tomorrow, and then we'll start with Article 2 at town meeting. Article 2 is to authorize, and I'll go very fast, so just raise your hand or wave if you want me to slow down. Article 2 is for unpaid bills, we need authority to pay a prior year bill. We don't have any this year, so we'll indefinitely postpone that. Article 3 is transfers, we believe we have 90.
And we'll have a list of those, they always come up on the board, too.
We'll put up on the website in the next couple of days, and we will certainly have handouts at town meeting. Those are trueing up this year's budget. Article 4 is the compensation schedule that we talked about. Article 5 is the general fund budget, and also sets the pay for our one elected official who was paid, and that's the town clerk. I believe she's getting a 4% increase, if I'm not mistaken. Article 6 is the Water Division Enterprise Fund Budget. Article 7 is the sewer budget. That's about just over $100,000, that's just for the center of town septic system.
Can, excuse me, can you remind me where the, what parts are really served by the sewer system that is?
Meeting House Lane, Walgreens, future Cilias and stuff like that, properties are right around there and up to the hill, you know, meeting, you know, up behind us up there.
And the vacant lots where stop and shop could go.
Someday. So it's, you know, that's held in a bay, and so when, if they need it, they can use it.
And the.
And the empty lots across from Walgreens as well.
Okay, so that's the parts that are served, and then where is, where does the sewage go?
It gets, actually gets pumped up the hill, and there's a, there's a leaching field, so it's just, it's, it's a, there's a, there's a system up there. It's really just a, it's a small plant, but it's really just a large septic system. It's not much different than a residential system, just obviously consolidating it all into one, so it's a little bigger than yours or mine.
So sewage is not treated at all, it's just collected and goes into this big leaching field, you're saying?
There is a big leaching field, yep. There is, and, you know, I don't want to get into the dirty details. Some solids and, but. Article 9, we talked about, that's the cash, we're not going to have any, so that'll be indefinitely postponed. Article 8, sorry. Article 9 is the debt, we'll borrow for ambulance. Article 10 is the Water Department, that's for the new well. Article 11 and Article 12 are the two petitions that we talked about. Article 13 is the committee reports, so there will be three committee reports, I believe, the Community Preservation, the Affordable Housing, and the Public Safety Building Committee. Also offers the opportunity for anybody to ask a committee a question if they have a question. Article 14 will actually be indefinitely, the recommendation is to indefinitely postpone that, that is at the clerk's request. She originally initiated this, but after having some more discussions with the school superintendent and the, and the police chief, we'd like to explore some different options before we go down this path, so we're going to ask to indefinitely postpone that for now, and then maybe come back with a different solution in the future.
I'm sorry, on 12, all these different.
Mike, Mike.
Thank you, David.
All these different sections under 12, who wrote those? The petitioner?
The petitioner, I believe they came from another town, we think Westwood was where they cut and pasted from, but.
Oh. Okay.
With some edits, but. There was a, somebody at the advisory committee raised, a resident raised the question that it's written as if it'll be a homeroom petition, so it doesn't seem to be in the right form for us, because actually it should be a general bylaw change. So I think we may or may not have a discussion about it, but it, there's a potential that it may just be stricken for formatting issue anyway, but I haven't discussed that with any of the attorneys yet.
We were on 14, I think?
I was moving quick, though, yep, 14.
Well. Is there support for that? It's just a matter of working out the logistics, parking, et cetera, et cetera? We're changing it from Tuesday to Saturday?
There was some debate, there's definitely some support for it, but there was, there was healthy debate, so there were some people who were concerned that switching, so this discussion is about still having the elections at Freeman Kennedy.
Yes.
But moving it from Tuesdays to Saturdays.
Yes.
The argument to switch it is that the kids don't get to use the gymnasium that day, and they don't get to have recess because of all the traffic coming in and out of the parking lot, so they're, they're locked in the building for the day. The concern.
That's on a Tuesday.
That's on a Tuesday, yes. The concern about switching it to a Saturday is there's still a lot of Little League and potentially, a lot of activity going on there, too, so some people thought it may not be that much better. I think Carol, that's our town clerk, and Chief Stone have talked about, potentially maybe it's time for us to look at breaking the precincts up into multiple locations. So we talked about maybe having a precinct here, maybe having a precinct at the library, maybe having a precinct at the senior center. That's, that's just, they haven't talked about that with the selectmen yet, because the selectmen have authority over the buildings, but that's one.
But the objective is to get more people to vote, right? That's why with the potentially.
That's always, yeah, well, that's always the objective of the clerk, yeah, certainly, to get more, but also to not have the kids locked in the building for a day either, I mean, that's, that's an objective as well.
And safety.
You know, I think there was, there was some argument, people saying that less people would be available to vote on Saturday. I find that hard, I've worked in Boston for 15 years, I would much rather have voted on a Saturday, because I, lots of times I just get stuck at work, and I intended to vote, but I just didn't make it home in time. So I would rather have a vote on Saturday. Plus, if it's Saturday, you know you're going away, you can always get an absentee ballot. But.
Okay, thank you.
You know, talks about that, I mean, that is a good discussion, but I think it'll be at a future meeting.
Why wouldn't they just have, go to school that day?
I think it's the snow days, and we put a lot of pressure on them, that's a gamble for, you know, we're already, they're already bucking up at the, almost at the end of the year as it is.
And they are, they do have no snow day, no school on the federal elections, so they do do that a little bit already, this, so now they're asking just another, you know, so in the fall, when we have the, every other year when we have the state elections, they don't have school. I think, you know, not that the school has said no, but asking them to close another day in the spring, it's just another, another day we're asking them not to have schools, not the worst thing in the world, but there are a lot of.
Just parent and teacher putting my input here. It just extends the school year another day in June, and then on top of that, if you have a lot of snow days, you potentially be looking at, you know, June 27th, something, it just extends the school year. I find working parents have a tough time taking another day off or finding daycare during the middle of the year, so. And personally, I think having strangers come in, I know there's great security, but I would personally like it on a Saturday, because it really only takes five minutes to vote. They run such a tight election here, that's my own opinion.
Yeah, that's a good point, I failed to bring that up, there's a, there's a, obviously, with all the news that we see, there's a growing concern that having so many people coming into the school, it just, while the kids are there, it's just, it's another risk factor that we would like to avoid if we could.
Just one. I just have one more question. Article 1, it's a little confusing how it's worded, is that regarding the town clerk position being appointed versus elected? Because it doesn't mention the town clerk here at all.
No, so on the ballot, and there's a sample, and because it's a, because it's a, because it's a posted ballot, we have to, we can't have a long, lengthy discuss, I can answer technical questions, but we can't have a debate about the pros and cons of that, because it's an open ballot. The ballot's been printed and it's been posted, and obviously tomorrow was the day. But Article 1 is just the fact that we have, that we have an election tomorrow. The ballot for that election, including the ballot question, there's a sample ballot out in the hallway outside the clerk's office, but question 1 will be, do you, something to the point, do you support converting from an elected official to an appointed official for the town clerk? And then, and then there will be all the traditional selectman positions, planning board positions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so that's for tomorrow, not on May 8?
Yeah, so the question, the ballot question for appointed versus elected clerk is, will be on the ballot tomorrow at, when you go to the polls.
Okay. It just doesn't mention the clerk here in that paragraph.
It's just like, there isn't a lot.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
So 16, is that where? 16 is another zoning bylaw, and certainly our, Walter, but this was up at the Village Rivers Edge, there is a proprietor there that would like to be able to offer massage as a ancillary, is that the right word, term? Accessory service to their business? So this is the zoning board making, making that change to help out somebody who wants to offer a new service in town. Article 17 is a, I'm surprised we didn't hint at that one yet. This is the zoning bylaw version of what we approved in the fall. In the fall, we had a general bylaw that prohibits, and we, and the town supported it, that prohibited the recreational use and sale and manufacture, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, of marijuana in town. The Attorney General's guidance is you have both a, you have both a general bylaw and you have a zoning bylaw that say the same thing. So this is the zoning bylaw version of what we approved in the fall, and this will require a two-thirds vote. Article 18, if it doesn't pass, we still have the general bylaw, so it'd still be prohibited, but again, and there's a lot of debate upon, you know, I'm sure you get five lawyers in a room, Todd being one of them, they all have different opinions, but whether or not it's necessary to have both or not, we certainly had a good debate about that the other day at the moderators' meeting, no real consensus.
Follow up question. I'll, I'm sorry. Thank you. There was some discussion some months ago, Jack, that towns that voted this way would not share in the state revenue from marijuana. Has that been resolved? Have you heard anything about that?
I have not, no, that's something we can check on, though. I haven't, I have not heard that answer to that question.
Well, okay, I recommend you check it before a town meeting, just to call a state rep and ask what the situation is. I had heard that maybe six, seven, eight months ago.
Yeah, I think Rich has an answer, I just, unfortunately, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Fair enough, yep.
18, we talked about, that's for the used car business down on Route 1A. Article 19, we talked about, that's the government study committee. Article 20 and 21, we talked about. Article 22, I think we talked about, that's just creating the administrative budget within the CPC, that's not general fund money, that's coming right out of the CPC. Article 23 is the, Jim said, it's, Scott said, it's the, it's putting the 10% sleeves into the, we're going to do it by bylaw anyway, I mean, by state law anyway, but this is just telling everybody that we're going to do it. Article 24, I think we've covered most of these, that just allows the selectmen to accept Chapter 90 funds to work, use on our roads. 25 is to accept monies through grants. 26 is to acquire easements for drainage and for the layout of roadways, and we're not spending any money for that, that's, the developer builds a subdivision, at the end of the process, we accept the roads. We would actually vote on the road to accept at town meeting, but this is to allow the selectmen to accept the easements in preparation of that. Article 27 is sell surplus property, not real estate or buildings, but everything else. Article 28, 9, and 30 are just the rescission of previously authorized bonds issued that we no longer deem necessary.
I'd like to thank everybody here, the town administrators, selectmen, other people at the podium, and everybody who attended for having this session, even though I would have liked this room to be overflowing, I'm.
Someday.
I'm working on it. I'm very pleased that at least this many people came, and I strongly encourage you to continue doing this, I think it's very valuable, so thank you.
I enjoyed doing it, and I appreciate everybody.
Thank you, David.
We appreciate everybody coming, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second to?
Jack. We can fix those two typos now.
Before you forget, thank you, everybody.